Buenas noches. I'd like to ask our student board member, Mrs. Angulo? Ms. Angulo? Angulu?
Angula.
Angulo. I'm gonna have, I'm gonna get it right by the time you finish your internship here. Would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Please your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Mr. Islam, do we have a report out of closed session?
Yes, President Montez. In closed session, the Board of Education denied the request for an extension of a leave of absence for classified employee number 1024415. The roll call board was 5-0. That's all.
Anything else to report?
Nothing else, thank you.
Okay, so at this time, do we have a motion to adjourn closed session?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That concludes closed session. Now we will be adjourning, now we will be opening the open session. And first, we'll start with the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any questions or comments regarding the adoption of the agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Up next, we'll go to Section B, Presentations. And first, we'll do our DSAC presentations. And take it away, Mrs. Angulu.
Ms.
Ms. Angulu.
Our Ms.
How do you say it in Spanish?
Angulo.
Angulo. I got that one now.
Good evening. Our first presenter is Ethan Barnes from Casera Middle School.
Good evening, board members, viewers, and the interim superintendent, Mr. Islam. My name is Ethan Barnes, and I am the vice president of Casera Middle School. Our PTA hosted a DJ party during sixth period on Friday, January 23rd. Our sixth grade pre-avid teacher team took eighty students to the University of Riverside on January 22nd. We had our first intervention on Thursday, January 29th. On Saturday, January 31st, an eighth grade pre-avid teacher took twenty-four eighth graders on a study trip to the Black College Fair in Los Angeles. We had our second quarter honor roll assembly on Tuesday, February 3rd. Last Friday, February 6th, we held a rewards dance for students who are academically sound and have great attendance or making their attendance by attending Step Up. Our Valentine's Dance will be on, will be tomorrow, the 12th. Students will be able to show off their talents at our talent show, which will be on the 19th. This month is Black History Month. February character trade is responsibility, and we are having our Breakfast of Champions at the end of the month to recognize people who showed responsibility. I'd like to thank the board members, viewers, and the interim superintendent for allowing me to talk about the activities for January and February from Casera Middle School.
Our next presenter is Annalisa Valenzuela from Rialto Middle School.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Mr. Islam, and our viewing audience. My name is Annalisa Valenzuela, and I am proud to represent Rialto Middle School as the ASB president. It is a pleasure to be here tonight and share the events for our school. We have started our second semester. The year is flying by. At the last board meeting, we were lucky to meet Reeve Coleman from the New Rialto Jersey Mike's. Working with the other schools, we were able to raise $5,109 for our schools. I know, it's a lot. We are very excited for our new community partner. Our January dance was visited by three professional hip-hop dancers, where they were performing and taught their craft. Several of our students even impressed them when they battled on the dance floor. This mentoring event was captured by the Rialto Record in the front page article. Tomorrow is our Valentine Dance, where we will rock the school once again. Friday, we will be spending, sending thirty of our honorable students to Scandinavia. Can you believe it? The weather's supposed to be eighty degrees. Our school is hosting the District Science Fair on February 19th. Come and check out all the science projects, as well as our water quality, sustainability, and supply projects for scholarships from Viola and Rialto Water Services. February 25th, we have invited our parents to attend school with us. We will, they will follow us through our day. School is definitely different than how they remember it before Common Core. Thank you for your time. It's been a pleasure. See you next time.
Our next presenter is Alonso Ramirez from J Hugh Middle School.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. My name is Alonso Ramirez, member of ASB at J Hugh Middle School. The Black Voice Foundation showed us many artifacts from Africa that were donated to them. They showed us some different activities to show us what they call SWOT, which means strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. It was a great learning experience. This past Saturday, we held J Hugh's first annual yard sale. It had a great outcome. Many parents and students came to the, to volunteer, and we raised close to $500. College and Career Day. We will have, we'll be having our first, oh, no, first. We'll be having our College and Career Day on February 19th to inform our students about different colleges and career pathways they can choose from when they graduate to high school. There will be many different presenters from different colleges as well. Finally, at the end of this month, we will be hosting our fifth grade Moving On Up Dance to welcome our incoming sixth graders and get them excited to becoming a Jaguar and coming to our new phenom, to come to our phenomenal school. Hearts and Roses Dance. Finally, our Hearts and Roses Dance was right before we came out to this meeting, and trust me, it was fun. Everyone had a great time and was able to dance the night away with their Valentine, except me. But there's always next year. Thank you for your time and good night.
Our final presenter is Selah Tina Louise from Cold Middle School.
Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. I am Tina Louise, and I'm the vice president of Cold Middle Schools ASB and the captain of the one and only middle school, J O T C. And I am here to tell all of you the wonderful things that are happening at Cold. First up, we have a pancake breakfast that's coming up. It's gonna be at the Applebee's by Loads. I welcome all of you guys, even the audience, everybody, to come by and support our J O T C ASB and band, so we can have, all have breakfast together at Applebee's. It's on February 15th. The tickets cost $10, so please come join us. Second, we have coming up is the Queen of Hearts Dance, which is gonna come up Thursday, next Thursday, February 19th. Hope to see all of you guys there. Third, we have our Patriotic Dress-Up Day. So this day is where you can come to school showing off your patriotism. Also, we can't forget our girls' basketball team who's undefeated. Also, our boys' team has only one lost game, lost one game. So go Cougars! And after a big fundraiser, Cold has raised a lot of money for, from Jersey Mike's fundraiser. Also, the entire Rialto School District has raised a total number of $5,109. And $1,069 goes straight to Cold Middle School. We are the number one top-selling school of Jersey Mike's. Finally, I want to give a big hand to our Science Fair site winners. Good job, and I best hope to them to win the District Science Fair. On that note, I think I'm done here, so have a good night. This is Tina signing off. Good night, Rialto.
That will conclude the DSAC presentations.
Thank you very much, Marisol. Thank you. Up next, we're gonna go on to item B2, and that's Special Employee Recognition. Mrs. O'Kelly, would you do us the honor?
Good evening.
Good evening.
And as I sat up there, I couldn't help but notice the fine young men from M&amp;O in the, in the room, rocking the house. So let's have them come up and stand up here with me. We have Gary Barnes, Sean Cutress, Ed Chisonis, Marcos Ortiz, still Steve Hilber, and David Lawrence. Come on up. Let's give them a big round of applause. Okay, many employees are noted in the Rialto Unified School District for working very hard, but from time to time, we need to recognize the ones who go above and beyond for students and staff. In the early evening on Sunday, January 11th, 2015, the Rialto Unified School District Maintenance and Operations Department was notified of an emergency electrical power failure at Kelly Elementary School. When the district's M&amp;O team arrived at the school on Sunday, they discovered the main electrical service had been forcibly opened, shut down, and vandalized, with many breakers stolen from the switch panel. According to the director of maintenance, Bill Ralph. You need to join your men, Bill. Under the guidance of our maintenance supervisor and maintenance foreman, our district electricians worked tirelessly throughout the night, tracing the damaged wiring, replacing the stolen breakers, and restoring power ten minutes prior to the start of school Monday morning. That meant they got no sleep that night. Although we are enjoying sunshine and better weather these days, it is important to note that these employees honored tonight, stayed up all night in thirty to forty degree weather to restore power so students and staff would be back at school and the flow of education would continue. Tonight, please join me in commending these hard-working M&amp;O staff members for an outstanding job, and on behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you. I would just like to add, on a personal note, and I always say this, but when I was principal at Eisenhower, M&amp;O were my favorite people. And they treated me wonderfully, so I am only too proud to give them these awards. So, let's see. Gary? Sean? Ed's not here? Ed's almost here. Steve? And Marcos?
Just O'Kelly, can you go in the middle and we'll go?
In the middle?
You got to be about, I mean, like, like Mr. Barnes is, can you show me all those? So they all look uniform. There you go.
And Ms. O'Kelly, if you could stay. If you could also do, our next item will be honoring REA, CSCE, and RSM employees of the Quarter.
Another pleasure. That's what's great about being a retired employee of the district. You know everybody. Okay, Mr. Vince Redman from Eisenhower High School, come on down! Okay, the Rialto Education Association selected Mr. Vince Redman, English teacher at Eisenhower High School, as the employee of the Quarter. Mr. Redman was born and raised in a small farming community located just outside of Columbus, Ohio. He is a product of the public school system, graduating in the top five percent of his class of a hundred four students, which was still a large class for, for that year in a high school with a total population of just over four hundred. Well, with graduating classes of, what, a thousand or more? That, that's, that's right. The following fall, Mr. Redman enrolled at the Ohio State University in Columbus, where he majored in radio television production communications and earned his first bachelor's degree. Mr. Redman accepted a full-time position in retail management and sales while concurrently working as a concert promoter for the Popular Entertainment Programming Board at Ohio State. He continued his college education part-time, and in the summer of 1986, Mr. Redman earned a second degree, a Bachelor of Science in English Education, with an English teaching credential. In the summer of 1987, Mr. Redman and his life partner, Dr. Lawrence, who needs to come up here, Renee, come on up with your. Relocated to Southern California, where Mr. Redman continued to work in retail management until 1989, when he was hired in the Redlands Unified School District as a tenth grade English teacher. Four years later, Mr. Redman and Dr. Lawson relocated to Northern California for further professional opportunities. Mr. Redman taught English at Red Bluff Union High School and became president of the Red Bluff Teachers Association during that eight-year period. They returned to Southern California in August of 2001, and Mr. Redman was offered a teaching position in the Rialto Unified School District. He taught first at Rialto High School, and then he transferred to Eisenhower High School. He currently serves as a twelfth grade expository reading and writing instructor, and he serves as the English department chair. Mr. Redman collects vinyl albums and CDs. Does anybody else remember vinyl albums? I do! As he was first bitten by the music bug, oh, you too! We must be the same age, 'cause I fell in love with the Beatles when I saw them on the Ed Sullivan Show in February of 1964. He also enjoys, I used to kiss Paul McCartney goodnight. It's a poster, but you know, to me, it was real. He also enjoys photography and long-distance running. Mr. Redman currently resides in one of the San Bernardino mountain communities. Ms. Lisa Lindberg, president of REA, added Vince is our current grievance chair and a past high school director of, on our REA executive board, as well as a past representative for CTA State Council. He has also been elected a number of times in the past to be a delegate, excuse me, a delegate to the NEA Representative Assembly held each summer. He takes his job as a teacher and a teacher advocate very seriously and continually does well by the REA and the RUSD. When Mr. Redman was informed that he was selected as the employee of the Quarter, he smiled. I really thought someone was putting me on. I enjoy the kids, I can relate to my students, and get a kick out of them. It's a relatable interchange. To be honored like this is a humbling feeling, and I accept this recognition on behalf of the hard-working teachers in our district. Thank you. And I'd like to present Mr. Redman with this certificate of recognition, which says, Vince Redman, Eisenhower High School English Teacher, REA Employee of the Quarter. Rialto Education Association Employee of the Quarter Vincent Redman for outstanding dedication and commitment to yourself, your school, and your community.
Thank you, Board Vice President, Mrs. O'Kelly.
I'm sorry. See, if you said no, you wouldn't have gotten me off the hook.
Okay, esteemed school board members, thank you for inviting me here this evening. I would like to thank a couple people, I suppose. First and foremost, my students, present and past. It wasn't for my kids, there'd be no reason to be here. I love them, they're great, they keep me feeling young. They're wonderful. Like to thank President Lisa, and the REA Executive Board, members of the REA, for making this possible. I am truly humbled by this award. It was unexpected. Like to thank my life partner, twenty-seven years, for all my craziness and putting up with me. And finally, I'd like to thank my mom. My mom raised four boys by herself. She worked twelve, thirteen, fourteen-hour days for as long as I can remember, seven days a week, and she still managed to keep us out of trouble. Still managed to come home ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night, get us out of bed, make sure we had our homework finished. And for that, I, I am very proud to have had mom as my mother. Mom, this is for you. Thanks for everything.
Thank you once again. Next up, we have board member, Mr. Joyala.
All employees are valuable. Tonight, we're going to honor a special person. And before we pronounce that name, just give you a little background on the position. Every administrator who has an assistant will understand the importance of that assistant. And those assistants, many times, are called secretaries. They start out as secretary one, secretary two, secretary three, as the years progress. But, you know, you could change the titles very easily and just call them associate directors, because those of us who've worked for systems know the value of a, of a secretary. And tonight, this person is called Mrs. Edith Jimenez, and would you join me up here at the podium? Mrs. Jimenez, who is a secretary three in the English Language EL program, was selected by CSCE for her long-term dedication to the Rialto Unified School District for more than thirty-six years.
Wow.
Mrs. Jimenez was born in Mexico. Upon moving to the Rialto area, she graduated from Eisenhower High School in 1972. She attended San Bernardino Valley College, and shortly after began working at the San Bernardino City Unified School District as a clerk. She also served in a clerical position at Cal Poly Pomona. Since she had moved to Rialto in the early 1970s, Mrs. Jimenez decided to apply for a position as a secretary one in the curriculum department in 1978. She got the job. My first supervisor who hired me at the district was Dottie Spence.
Oh, wow. Going back a long time.
It's all good. Recalled, Mrs. Jimenez, and if you don't mind, I'll read. "So I am grateful to her for all three decades. Mrs. Jimenez has worked with various supervisors and support staff at the district level in 1999. She was reclassified to secretary three in special programs. The program has changed, some good and some not so good," she replied. "The demands and the workload are greater, but, are greater, but staff has gone down, so we are doing a lot more with less staff members. We understand that. We do understand that. But it is nothing that she complains about. I enjoy working in Rialto," she smiled. "I'm a product of this district, so it's very much my home." Mrs. Jimenez has been married to Francisco Jimenez. Are you here tonight? Please, join us up here at the podium. And let's go ahead and have the family members join us as well. This is a good time. The couple has one son, Julian, who is nineteen years old and a graduate of Eisenhower High School. There you go. He is currently attending Chaffey College. On her spare time, she enjoys crocheting. The Jimenezes also enjoy traveling. She said her favorite place she ever visited was Assisi, Italy, in 2013. Edith's work ethic has been shining for thirty-seven years in our district, and she continues to shine, said Linda Silva. There's Linda right there. Maybe you can join us, Linda? Please. President of CSCE, let's give Linda a hand here. Would you like to read this one, Linda?
Her heart, passion, and dedication are exhibited daily. She has such a deep compassion for the students, especially EL students. Edith's devotion reflects in everything that she does, and she goes out of her way to assist others wherever and whenever needed.
Miss, stay with us. Mrs. Jimenez said, "I am truly thankful for this recognition. It means a lot to me." We're gonna give her an opportunity, before I give her this certificate, to say a few words. Please.
Good evening. Thank you all for your support, collaboration, and encouragement during my career with Rialto Unified School District. Thank you, CSCE, for this honor. I am very grateful. I especially want to thank my supervisor, Marina Madrid, and all the wonderful people I work with in the EL department and throughout the district. I would also like to thank my family. Thank you for your care. Thank you for your care and for being here tonight. I am very fortunate.
Well said. And on behalf of the Rialto Unified School District, Edith, we'd like to present you with a certificate of recognition for all the hard work and the dedication that you've done. We'll step on the side here, and if you'll join us, I know you've got another one there, but we'll take at least one picture. Congratulations on your recognition.
I do. CSEA Rialto Chapter 203 Edith would like to give you this certificate of recognition for Employee of the Quarter for your dedicated service to the EL Programs of the Rialto Unified School District.
Let's give Ms. Jimenez one more round of applause. And next up, we have our Board Clerk, Ms. Dina Walker, ready to present for RMSA.
And I am sorry for the person who's going to receive this next award, because I didn't, as Mr. Yala, get all the actors in play and everybody else. So, next time, next time. So, the next award is actually going to, coming from the Rialto School Managers Association, and it is for Ms. Yolanda Jackson, Mrs. Yolanda Jackson. Mrs. Jackson was born in Los Angeles. She graduated high school in 1985 from St. Mary's Academy in Inglewood. Mrs. Jackson went on to complete her bachelor's degree from Cal State Long Beach in 1991 in Administration Systems Management. She earned her master's degree in Educational Leadership from Azusa Pacific and is currently working on earning her doctorate. Leaving LA Unified as a fourth-grade teacher, Mrs. Jackson came to work at Kelly Elementary School in 2004. She was promoted as a literacy coach at J. Hugh Middle School and then entered Administration as an elementary assistant at Dahlahan Elementary. Last month, Mrs. Jackson was promoted from Garcia Elementary Administrator to lead as the principal at Fitzgerald Elementary School. Give her a big hand. It's like Christmas, huh? This is the season of awards. So, to quote her, she said, "I am so excited and I'm up for the challenge," she smiled. "The one thing that Rialto Unified has, which LA Unified did not, is the close relationships within the school communities. We have a great support system for our kids through our active parents and staff." Mrs. Jackson and her husband, Mr. Vince Jackson, now an actor, the player in the light. Mr. Jackson, would you please come to the stage? Mrs. Jackson, see, you're supposed to wait. I was giving you a big intro. Mrs. Jackson and her husband, Mr. Vince Jackson, live in San Bernardino. They share seven children. Her daughter, Chloe, Chloe, ooh, yay. Chloe is a fourth-grade student at Garcia Elementary. And her other daughter, Kenny, graduated from Carter High School. When she has spare time, which is very rare, Mrs. Jackson says she enjoys performing community service work and loves to go swimming. She says, "I love the water," she replied. "If I had a choice between the beach and the mountains, I'd be at the beach all day." Me too. Henry Elementary Principal, Marianne Thompson, nominated Mrs. Jackson for the recognition. And according to RSMA President, Dr. Monty Stewart and Mrs. Thompson, they mentioned that Mrs. Jackson's greatness was showing true leadership in the face of adversity. "There were some sensitive issues at Garcia's campus lately where the school lost an employee," replied Dr. Stewart. "And through the day-to-day operation of her job, Yolanda kept spirits up and helped with staff support. She does not let adversity stop her from doing what's best for everyone. That's a team player. We are proud she earned this honor." Mrs. Jackson said that when she was informed that she was selected as one of the nominees, the district's employee, that she was completely shocked when she was selected as the District's Employee of the Quarter. She said, "I've been nominated 10 times," she joked. "And I began to call people to tell them, 'Stop nominating me, because when I'm not getting selected, it's really hurting my ego.'" So, congratulations, Ms. Jackson. You won. Let's give her a big hand, everybody. On behalf of the Rialto, now let me get the name right, the Rialto School Managers Association, this is presented to you on Wednesday, February 11th, by RSMA to Yolanda Jackson, Fitzgerald Elementary School Principal, for RSMA Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations.
And on behalf of RSMA, excuse me. On behalf of RSMA, we present you also with a certificate of recognition, basically for Employee of the Quarter, with sincere appreciation for excellence in administration. Congratulations.
To the board members, to the Superintendent, Mr. Islam, and to all the cabinet members, this is truly an honor. I tend to be silly sometimes and joke around, and I really did tell Saeda that. I said, "Stop nominating me, because it was hurting my feelings when I didn't get elected." So, but tonight, I really stand on the shoulders of giants. There are so many people who mentored me and guided me to where I am today that I have a lot of people to thank. Starting with my parents, who told me to never give up, always do what I feel is best in my heart. My mom is watching on the internet tonight, because she couldn't be here. And having a family to support me every step away, starting with my husband and my kids, it means a lot. They push me and I push them. And we focus on making sure that we make a difference, no matter where we are. So, to my fellow administrators, thank you so much for this honor, and thank you for this opportunity.
One more round of applause for Ms. Jackson. Thank you, Ms. Walker. Next up, we have a Elementary Avid Presentation by Preston Elementary School.
Good evening. My name is Robin McMillan, and I'm the proud principal of Preston Elementary School. And today, I want to say good evening to the Honorable Board of Education of Rialto Unified School District, to our interim superintendent and cabinet members and our viewing audience today. Today, my staff and I, I have three wonderful teachers here with me, and I would be remiss if I didn't introduce them first. First, I would like to introduce Ms. Erica Ayala, who has been serving in Rialto for 19 years. This is her 20th year here in Rialto. In addition, I have Ms. Mendez, who's been in our district for five years, and she's here with me as well. And last but definitely not least, Ms. Reynolds, who's been serving in the district for at least 15 years. Tonight, my staff and I will be sharing with you information in regards to our Avid program that we have been so graciously able to implement at Preston Elementary School. Inside your folders, you will find a PowerPoint of five slides in addition to historical data that goes back until the last time we took the actual CST. For the viewing audience, I also have a PowerPoint for you to take with you. If you have any questions, I will remain to answer any questions that you may have. Okay, starting off again with a new focus. Again, just to give you some background information, I included data in regards to Preston Elementary School. Preston Elementary School was identified as a program improvement school site. And so, at this point, the staff and I are looking at ways that we can implement strong instructional strategies to support all students. And so, if you look there, it says a new focus. Preston Elementary School will implement a school-wide Avid program to decrease the achievement gaps between the various subgroups on campus in all core subject areas. The fundamental background, or what I want to say is coupling effect of Avid or the program will include the focus on WICER. And what that stands for is Writing Across the Curriculums, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading. And why this is so fundamental? Because these are all the components of common core instruction, and these are the things we're doing every day within the classroom. And so, what we're doing is just bringing it to the forefront so that students, parents, teachers all understand these are things we're doing every day. So, we're going to focus on these areas to make sure all students who leave Preston are ready, not only for middle school and high school, but those years beyond, and that is including college. Inside your folder, you also have this information and the data. And there's a lot of data here, but I'm just going to focus on about two key areas, actually, three, that I want you to look at. If you look at the second area there where it says African-American, so it's overall African-American. And we're going to slide down to the end where it says Estimated API and Differences. And if you look at the API from 2011, 2012 for African-American students, it was 705. And as we all know, the goal for every district and every site was 800. And so, when we look at our African-American students, we definitely see a gap there. If you go down to about the middle of the page, you see English-only, you see English learners, a very large, significant group on our campus. And if you look at them there as well, you'll see a score of 759. The numbers on the end where it says Differences, and there's minus numbers, that means that we did not meet those target numbers or scores we were supposed to meet. The last area I want to focus on on this slide, if you go to the very bottom, female and male students. And you look at the disparity between the groups. Female students, 780; male students, 739. And I think sometimes we don't spend enough time really talking about the differences between the different genders. And so, we want to spend some time on that as well. I want to go back and just kind of mention, the question may be, "Well, why are we looking at data that is so old?" Again, it's important to note that when I first came to Preston, and I've been the proud principal there for the last three years, this is the data I was looking at as the principal. So, it's important for me to tell you where this whole idea started and the timeframe in which we started actually talking about Avid. If you look at the top, it says Cycle 11, 2009, 2010; Cycle 12, 2010, 2011; Cycle 13, 2011 and 2012. And if you go across, you'll look at basically the gaps in between the different significant subgroups. Inside the folders for the board members and the cabinet members, you will also see another chart that also includes data from 2012 and 2013 as well. For the viewing audience, in the back of your PowerPoint, you also have that data as well. Okay? So, where do we go now? Preston Elementary School Avid Goals. What are we going to focus on as a site, as a community, as our students and parents, as we all come together? The first thing we want to look and do is basically provide significant training for staff members to correctly implement the Elementary Avid curriculum. Many people are familiar with Avid from secondary, middle school, and high school. There is a large difference between Elementary Avid and Secondary Avid, because in Secondary Avid, in most cases, the students are pulled and they have an elective course where they go, and they have tutors, and they go over the information that they've learned in Avid. In the elementary model, the strategies and the curriculum are taught inside the actual classroom, and that is different. Next, we want to infuse the Avid strategies within every classroom to decrease the achievement gaps between the various subgroups on our campus. Male, female, African-American, Latino, Hispanic, and again, just looking at our students with disabilities as well. We want to include everyone when we talk about giving these strategies out, so everyone leaves Preston in a better place. We want to build a stronger school-to-home connection to better support our students, to make sure our parents know exactly what their students need before they get to middle school, before they get to high school. Create an environment where every student will be successful and build their own self-efficacy regarding their academic achievement. We want to build a bridge to support and increase student achievement for all students prior to their matriculation to middle school. So, we're working on those middle school students before they even make it out the door. And last but not least, establish an environment of college awareness for every student on campus. And I must say, the staff is so excited about our themes for next year. Every year, we pick a theme. And so, I had one of the elementary, I'm sorry, one of the kindergarten teachers come in. "I want to be the University of Oregon." So, they are so excited already. And so, I just encourage everyone to come out and see our school site and see some of the great things we're going to be doing. Okay? For Avid implementation, there are certain key points that need to happen, and they need to happen in a certain order. And so, what I did was I kind of broke down a three-year implementation cycle of things that we need to focus on at our site. In Year 1, 2014, 2015, and that is the year we're in right now, establishing the Avid infrastructure. And I'm going to go over what we're doing already to make that happen. Year 2, 2015, 2016, basically looking at, making sure that it's crossing all the different grade levels and also including those kinder students as well. Year 3 could actually be broken into a Year 3 slash a Year 4, because you look at the pillars of excellence within the Avid and basically sustaining the program to make sure it's going to continue to grow. So, some of those things that we're going to look at, and again, this happens in Year 1, Year 2, and Year 3, a revision of the Preston Elementary School Mission and Vision Statement. And this is something that happens with the entire community. It's nothing that I come up with in my office, but my teachers, my leadership team, my grade levels, my ELAC, my School Site Council, we all spend time looking at our mission and vision and how those Avid strategies will be implemented inside the Mission and Vision Statement. Parent and community meetings regarding the new school-wide Avid, focus on Avid. And I've already shared some of this information with my ELAC parents and also at School Site Council. And I just want to say, my parents are excited. Staff members attend local training and summer institute certification training. The teachers who stand here next to me, we all attended a training in Upland Unified School District. It was a two-day training. In addition to that, there's a summer institute in order for you to be certified to truly be an Avid teacher. And we will be attending that training as well. Okay? Collaborating with Cole Middle School regarding an Avid Bridge Program for all entering sixth-grade students. Site-level evaluation of the Avid program and student achievement data. We're looking at data every day, every day, from DIBELS to SIPs to everything that we do to make sure that if we're spending the time and energy in Avid, that it's going to reap some rewards for our students as well. So, everyone will take part of evaluating the actual Avid program. Opportunities to visit and analyze other site-level Avid programs. When the ladies and I attended the training, we met various individuals from different sites, from Upland to Victorville, Moreno Valley. And what we did was we shared contacts, and we already have invites to go out to other schools and look at their and look at their Avid programs already. Last but not least, provide all students in grades third through fifth grade opportunities to attend at least two college-based field trips during the school year. I want my students on those campuses so they can truly see what college is about, and I don't want it to wait to high school. Okay? Preston Elementary School. By implementing the Avid strategies until the instructional day at Preston Elementary School, every student, every student, will have quality access to the following. The WICER-based lessons, use of planners' agendas and interactive notebooks. And as we have already started some of this, Ms. Ayala is going to pass down just a few notebooks to share with you so you can see where our students are already. And that just means that we just have so much room to grow, but we are already in a place where notebooks, agendas, and everything else are already common for our students. The use of 2 and 3 column notes in addition to Cornell notes. Goal setting. How many times do we have conversations with our students to make sure they understand what goals they're setting for themselves? Organizational skills. As a parent of three students, I don't know how many times I spend the evening cleaning out backpacks. So with that being said, we want to make sure our students can do that for themselves and understand the reason why they're doing it. And last but not least, the college awareness. If you look at this picture here, it says, "High School Graduation, Class of 2027." Those are kinders currently sitting at Preston. And I want to make sure, before they leave Preston, before they leave Rialto Unified, they have all the information that they need and their parents to make sound decisions and know that college is possible for them and their family. So with that being said, once again, what you have in front of you, board members, are just some samples of some notebooks that my students are already doing in their classroom. And as a past middle school teacher, this is middle school quality already. Okay? Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am.
How extensive is the Avid program at the elementary level?
It's very extensive in the sense that they really focus on third, fourth, and fifth and sixth grade because some schools go to sixth grade as well.
Okay.
But already in kinder, you're seeing the sense of organization, the writing of paragraphs, and also using rubrics to see what makes my paragraph or my essay an excellent essay. And so to see other schools, the teachers and I are actually going to go to Victorville to see a school that is K-6 Avid-based, and they've been doing it for about four years.
Wonderful. Now, is your entire staff going to be able to attend the summer institute?
At this point right now, the ladies who are here, we have one additional teacher who will be going to the summer institute. So this is a planning year. We were the first group to go to training. This is a training year for us. And so my goal is when we start the upcoming school year, we have teachers who have been trained in San Diego at the institute, certified, and we come back. And there will be certain Avid strategies that we will try to implement school-wide, about three or four, so that we can make sure that even those individuals who have not been trained still have access to the Avid curriculum. And the goal is that everyone gets trained, and that's the proper way to implement something on campus.
And the training is outstanding.
Yes. Okay. And so ladies, if you would like to mention anything? Okay. We talked before we came. And so last but not least, I do want to say that we need those notebooks back before we leave today. But I would be remiss if I didn't thank some very important people in here in regards to the opportunity to have the elementary Avid. First of all, I want to say thank you to the interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, and also his cabinet. One Colb Monday day, they let me come to their meeting, and they let me share my idea. And before I was out the door, Robin, you got it. Whatever you need, you got it. And I definitely want to say thank you to everyone. In addition in addition to that, I want to say a special thank you to Dr. De Souza, who in 2012 took me on a field trip to Riverside, and we went looking at schools who already have Avid elementary in place. And we drove over and through the woods to get to Riverside. And we definitely saw some very dynamite programs, and I'd hope to implement something like that. As I go just through the room, there's some wonderful directors who have been part of this conversation from the first day I stepped on Preston's campus, from John Roach, who's been over at my campus to talk about technology and what we can do for technology, to Ms. Smith Azard, who comes over and checks on us just to see how we're going with our Avid implementation, Ms. Beth Curtis, who is my supervisor, who I can email at all crazy hours just to ask her advice about Avid. In addition to that, Ms. Linda Miner, who was sitting there. Oh, who's back there? The lady with the money. In addition to that, just anyone that I have missed, I just want to say thank you because this was nothing that just came about because Robin thought about an idea. This is something that my teachers, the district, and so forth have been part of. And would you like to say something? Go ahead.
As a teacher, I've been in the district for fifteen years, all at Preston Elementary. And I have fourth grade this year, and I have already implemented part of the WICER. And a lot of my students have a very difficult time with the word "organization." Pencils, book bags, you don't even know what's in there. So every day, I say, "I need the Owen WICER." And that's all I say to them. And they check each other. "Oh, Ms. Reynolds, do I have the Owen WICER? Do I have the Owen WICER?" They want that affirmation. And it's so wonderful that they're really excited. And I'm really excited because they're excited. And I'll say, "We're going to be talking to our partners today." And they're like, "Is that the C in, is that the collaboration, the C in the WICER?" And so what, and I've been to Colb also, so they, as a training, and just to know that those kids going with that knowledge to middle school, those middle school teachers are going to be like, "Yes! Can we get it down a little lower so they already know what they're doing as coming to middle school?" So I appreciate your time, and I'm really excited, and I'm glad that you guys are in board with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My only question is, is my only question is how can we get this program at all our elementary schools? Because it looks like, it looks like, do you guys know what's going on over there? You guys got it going on over there with this program?
I would definitely say that there's other principals who are interested. But one of the things that I would just say is that we need to make sure we focus and make the main thing be the main thing. And so as we work to get our program off the ground and we work on our first steps and our second steps and so on and so forth, making sure other principals can be part of that actual training to make sure we're not just pushing out a program, but making sure people are truly trained to make sure. And I already know that there's several principals, one sitting in the audience, already ready to go and be the next school in the district. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Walker. Go ahead.
So just for the, for the team at Preston, the other day, I was able to, as I'm shaking and talking, yes? I was able to visit Preston for another, another opportunity that was happening at Preston. And I was informed that they were going to be the, one of the first elementary Avid programs in the district, and I'm very excited about that. My focus for my lifetime is around college access for students, for all students. And for many students across the nation, especially in California, Avid is the only college access program that they'll have access to because students don't have the money to hire private, private college advisors to help them. So Avid is very instrumental in making sure that all students across the board have access to college career planning and those steps to prepare them. So again, Ms. McMillan and your staff, I thank you for your vision. I thank you again for the detailed information that you've put together and the research around your student population over the course of those years to make sure that who you're looking at, and the main thing stays the main thing, is student achievement. And being able to disaggregate the data to say who is the most in need. I'm hoping that the students that are most affected by the Avid as you implement Year 1, 2, and 3 are going to be those students who are, who are least affected, who have the least gains in your API scores as we move forward. And as you present, as we roll out, now, you know, the first year is not going to be all glory. We know that. But you share with us those, the great gains and things that are happening, as well as those obstacles, so that we can replicate with perfection here in the district. Again, thank you for your team.
Ms. Montes, may I make one comment?
Sure.
I thank principals of Preston Elementary School and the staff leading this program. And our goal is to have every elementary school have this program. So they're the one leading this for the, and we like to come back and share their experience and with their expertise and their success going forward and bring other school, elementary school, that same program as going forward. So that's our goal. Thank you.
If we could train every single teacher with Avid strategies and every single teacher utilized Avid strategies with fidelity, we wouldn't have a low percentage of our kids going to college. The majority of them would be going because it's an excellent program.
And let me just say this too, and this is a personal thing. That Avid book, I have a 10th grader in high school who is in Avid, who consistently gets a C in Avid. And when I look at the notes, what it says, the notebook. I need to take that copy of that notebook home to my 10th grader and show her what an A book looks like. So, thank you again.
One more round of applause for Preston Elementary School. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Islam.
You're welcome.
Up next, we have the Governor's Proposed Budget Fiscal Year 2015, 2016, presented by no other than Mrs. Diane Romo. Take it away.
Good evening, everyone. Members of the board, Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. On January 15th, the Governor gave us his proposal for the 2015-16 budget. So I'm going to go through some of the highlights. So what he emphasized was that the California economy is looking very positive. Job growth is strong, and the stock market is recovering. Real estate market has improved and is continuing to improve. Unemployment is lower in the whole state. So what does this mean for our district? It means sales tax and income tax. So when the state has these sources of revenue, they trickle down into the school districts. So this is, you know, very positive news for our school district.
Trickle is the word there. They don't gush, they trickle.
Yeah, if they can make it all the way down. So for school districts in specific, we received $2.5 billion more in Prop 98 funding. This is above and beyond what was apportioned last year. Four billion was allocated within the budget to close the LCFF gap. So in the 2012, 2013 school year, we were funded under revenue limit. Governor Brown changed it to Local Control Funding Formula to give the school districts more control over how money is used towards students. So it's an eight-year implementation plan, and each year, we receive a portion of the amount that we are entitled to. So this year's portion will be 32.19. We also are going to receive a 1.5% COLA. And there will be no inter-year deferrals, which means that we won't have to borrow any money. We'll get the money that is owed to us. And then we're also getting a one-time Common Core funds of $180 per ADA. The things that are not in the budget is there's no statewide school facilities bond. Because so many local bonds were so successful, they have really turned a blind eye to this and are hoping that the local school districts and governments will take more responsibility and pass their own bonds. This is really a disadvantage for a district of our community because our, you know, our community members can't afford to have so many bonds. So I'm sure that the state will have to come up with some alternative funding. There's also a significant increase in STIRS and PERS coming our way. The example I have here is for CalSTRS. In 2013, 2014, the rate was 8.25. By 2021, the rate will be 19.1. So that will be an increase of $12 million. So in a future slide, you'll see that we'll be receiving more funds, but then the state is really passing on additional costs without giving us adjustments to cover those costs. They still don't have any additional funds for special education. They don't have any additional funds for child, early childhood education, or any prior year state mandates. So in this slide, you can see that in 2012, 2013, when we had revenue limit, we received $158 million approximately. By the time that we have the Local Control Funding Formula fully implemented, we'll receive $272 million. That will be a total increase of $113 million over the eight years. One thing I kind of wanted to pinpoint and highlight in case you haven't heard this before, under revenue limit, it was, the program was very much driven by the funding. So you receive this funding for this type of expenditure. Where Local Control Funding Formula, it's really driven by the outcomes. What does the school district want to see? And what do they think best fits their students and their needs? So that significantly impacts the way that our district operates. This slide is an overview of the assumptions that are being used to arrive at our funding that's available. In the current year, we're getting a COLA of .85. 29.1% of the gap is being funded. So what does that mean? That means that we're going to get an additional $27 million this year. With that $27 million, we have to cover, you know, a consumer price index, which is your increasing your general goods of 2.1%, STIRS of 8.8%, PERS of 12.6%, and health and welfare of 4%. Next year, we anticipate getting $20 million, $20 million more than this year. However, as you can tell, Consumer Price Index, STIRS up to 10.73%, PERS up to 15%, and health and welfare is estimated at 7%. In addition to this, we also have the class size reduction requirement where we have to hire additional teachers to meet those 24:1 requirements from LCFF. And then also, we haven't received a lot of funding for years. So our facilities need repair, our transportation needs, you know, to be replaced, all sorts of things. So that kind of really takes away the purchasing power of the additional funds that we are receiving. So in a nutshell, that is what the Governor had for us, and that's what our outlook looks like. Does anybody have any questions?
No, but you did a very good job.
Thank you.
Ms. Montes, a board member, first of all, I want to thank you, Diane. The, as you know, Local Control Funding Formula is called Distribution Model. It's not a new funding. It's not that we're getting, we lost all the categorical fundings, you recall, state categorical money. So with the, with the Local Control Funding Formula, we do, we're going to receive additional money, but this is not, when you look at it, it's not that everything is new funding. So that, what I mean by, is just that they're taking categorical money, folding into a Local Control Funding Formula. By mean, that they're giving you control with your governing board and the school, local administration to run this program what's best for the students' achievement, student achievement. So this, that's the Governor's plan. So tonight, what you see in very summarized information of the Governor's plan leading how it's going to impact our Rialto Unified School District program and the funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Islam. Thank you, Ms. Romo, again. That brings us up to Item C, Public Comments. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Do we have any more slips?
No. Not at this time.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Russell Silva.
Good evening, board members, administration, and viewing audience. My name is Russell Silva, and I'm living in Rialto. And it's time for me to leave, I suppose. I'm here on behalf of the Rialto Community Coalition. As you know, the Coalition is, their, their whole goal for the Coalition is to promote a healthy and safe city by changing the attitudes and the thoughts with, when it comes to the uses of drugs and alcohol with our youth. And our vision is to try and come up with programs or even events that will get that and try and encourage children to stay clean and healthy. Well, on the, I have, I have a handout here because on the, if you can pass it to me. On the 21st of this month, we're going to have an event. Normally, we meet on Tuesday, the first Tuesday of every month in the evening. And we're, it's a, several communities, parents, and also some community leaders that meet. And we're trying to create programs. But as a parent, I know that it's difficult because, to come up with ideas because when we used to plan vacations, I would sit there and I would say, hey, well, this is going to be fun. And my kids would look at me and say, what are you talking about? So we decided that what we want to do on the 21st, as you can see, it's from 8:00 in the morning until 1:00 PM, we're trying to get the kids involved, and we want to get their feedback as to what they want to see. we're trying to get the kids involved, and we wanna get their feedback as to what they wanna see. So, I would like to offer this invitation out to the community as well. We're trying to not just get the parents, not just get community leaders like yourself, but also children involved to try and come up with programs and ideas and things that we can do to help out the community and to keep the kids in a safe environment. So, I provided some handouts for you, so you can see when it's coming up, and encourage you to come and join us, it should be a wonderful event. And we're looking forward to being very successful with it, and hope to have more planning sessions in the future with the kids. I've already talked with some, at my Kwanzaa meeting, I talked with some of the key club members, and we're gonna try and get them involved. And I talked with, even, I'm excited to see if we can even get some of the DSAC players involved, because after all, they are community leaders within their own community of the school. So, we look forward to seeing if you can join us, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Russell Silva. Up next, we have Mrs. Celia Salaya.
Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa directiva.
Good evening, Board Members.
Presidente del Board, Mr. Montes.
President of the Board, Mr. Montes.
Superintendent Interim, Mr. Islam, and the audience. Mi nombre es Elia Salaya Saravia, la señora Mirna Ruiz, y la señora Patty Ruiz.
My name is Elia Salaya Saravia, Mirna Ruiz, and Patty Ruiz.
Y somos del Grupo de Apoyo para Padres de Niños Especiales.
And we are the parents.
Amigos Unidos.
Friends that are united.
Grupo de Apoyo para Padres de Niños Especiales.
This is a group that supports parents of children that are special.
Y estoy aquí para agradecer en nombre del grupo a Mr. Montes, Mr. Ayala, miembros del Board, y a Mr. Gutierrez, Coordinador de Educación Especial, por participar y apoyar las actividades de nuestro grupo. En el futuro, será un honor contar con la presencia del resto de los Board, de los miembros del Board, Ms. Walker, Ms. O'Kelly, and Mr. Martinez.
And I am here to give you my appreciation to the group, Mr. Montes, Mrs. Ayala, members of the Board, Mr. Gutierrez, Coordinator of Education, special participants, and those that give the support for these activities to our group. In the future, we'd like to honor and also count with you and with your presence to the rest of the, the rest of the Board members as well. Also, Mr. Walker, Mr. Oakley. Oh, Mrs. Walker, I apologize.
Oh, Kelly.
Oh, Kelly, I'm new, I'm sorry. Kelly and Mrs. Martin, Mr. Martinez, and also for those, we'd like to communicate. She's right here, she wants me to follow her, so I'm going along with her, I'm sorry.
También para comunicarles que algunos padres nos dijeron que en la escuela Call, Middle School, fue cerrada la clase de RSP sin notificarle a los padres y sin hacerles un IP antes a los niños.
And also, to communicate to you that some of the parents were not notified about the school called MS.
Middle School.
Middle School, okay, it was closed.
La clase fue cerrada? También para notificarles que algunos padres nos dijeron.
But also to notify to you that some of the parents didn't.
Okay, I guess I have to read. También para comunicarles que algunos padres llegaron a nuestro grupo a decirnos que en la escuela Call.
So, some of the parents came to inform us that this school named Call.
Fue cerrada la clase de RSP.
So, the class that is called RSP class was closed.
Sin notificarles a los padres.
And that came about without notifying the parents.
Y sin hacerles un IP.
And without giving them an IP.
Antes de cerrarla.
Before they closed that down.
Como siempre, haciendo decisiones sin pensar en la educación de los niños.
As usual, making decisions without considering the children.
Y también nos trajeron fotografías de la escuela Carter High.
And they also brought us pictures from the school Carter High.
Donde se puede observar a los niños especiales.
Where you could see the disabled children.
Recogiendo basura reciclable.
Picking up recyclable garbage or trash.
Sin guantes.
Without using gloves.
Con la excusa que es parte de un club.
With the excuse that this is part of a club.
Y también como un programa para que los niños aprendan matemáticas.
And also that this is part to help the children learn math.
Nos gustaría saber a cuántos de ustedes les gustaría que usaran ese método de enseñanza con sus hijos.
And we would like to know how many of you would like for them to use that method of learning with your children.
O que pertenecieran a ese club.
Or that they would take part with that club, or be part of it.
Por favor, les pedimos.
And we beg you, or we ask you please.
Que hagan una investigación.
That you could do an investigation.
Y que traten con respeto y dignidad a los estudiantes de educación especial.
And that you could treat with respect and dignity those children that are special or disabled.
Y aquí les voy a entregar a los Board, un juego de fotografías de los niños.
And here I brought with me some pictures of the children.
Desalo, por favor, y, Mr. Mr. Islam, please.
Gracias.
Thank you.
With that, thank you, Mrs. Salaya. With that, we don't have any more speaker cards. At this time, I'd like to offer the chance to anyone else that would like to comment on anything on the agenda or off the agenda. All right, without any requests, we'll go ahead and move on to comments from Association Executive Board Members, and we'll start with Rialto Education Association. Do we have any REA representatives that would like to take the floor?
Good evening, Board, interim Superintendent Mohammed Islam, cabinet, community members. My name is Lisa Lindberg, I'm the President of the Rialto Education Association. I just wanted to make some clarifications on a stand that the Rialto Education Association has on all-day kindergarten. I received a call from Associate Superintendent Jasmine Valenzuela from Ed Services, asking REA's position on all-day kindergarten. I want to be clear that we do not oppose all-day kindergarten, but when there was a consultant here, I believe a year and a half, that suggested all-day kindergarten was an answer to some of our district's woes. I know you've asked her questions such as graduation rates, and I think the answer was all-day kindergarten. I think someone may even have brought up world hunger, and the answer was all-day kindergarten. I'm not su, okay, I digress, but. My point being that when that happened, Leslie Chambers, the Vice President, and I did something very novel. We actually met with the kindergarten teachers of the district, and we held a series of meetings at the Professional Development Center and asked them what they thought of the all-day kindergarten. And I, and I do need to tell you that not one single kindergarten teacher said, I can't do all-day kindergarten, not one. They did say, however, some of my kids can do all-day kindergarten. But that wasn't even the main point. The main point is that many, I would say most of our kindergarten teachers, are already doing a different program rather than the traditional kindergarten program. We have the early bird, late birds going on in a lot of schools, and those of you from the elementary level know that's when you have the smaller group of kids come in for the first hour, then all 32 come in for the next two and a half hours, and then the smaller group stays for the last hour. So, if there's an all-day kindergarten, that takes away that small group opportunity that these teachers have been doing. Another school does tutoring session. They have all of their kids for the three and a half hours, and then for an hour each day, they take maybe a group of five to eight, Monday through Friday, but a different group each day, and that group gets tutoring. And with an all-day kindergarten, that shoots their program to smithereens. So, their concern wasn't so much about the all-day kindergarten, but the, protecting the programs that they had just recently put in place the past few years. Traditional kindergarten still exists. We have teachers who partner together, we have the AM and PM, and then you have two credential teachers for an hour in each of those kindergarten rooms. With an all-day kindergarten, you don't have that because they each have their own room with their kindergarten class. So, they were also concerned about that. And then, one of the other concerns was, and this is a principal concern, although they might not admit it, I'll say it for them, the kindergarten teachers were on a traditional schedule, and they might all be mourning. They offer support, DIBELS testing, assessments, tutoring, to the K through third-grade programs. So, they might go for an hour in another teacher's classroom to help them out. So, it's, I don't want you to hear the message that REA, which usually means Lisa, is against all-day kindergarten. What I am against is not listening to our members' ideas and what they're doing now and what's really working. And some of them have only been doing it a few years, and they're really protective of their programs. They see it working with their small groups, and I just wanted to get that message out there. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Lisa Lindberg, we appreciate the feedback. Next up, do we have any members from CSEA that would like to take the floor?
Good evening, Board, and interim Superintendent, Mr. Islam. Two things, one is, thank you. Thank you for acknowledging the classified staff that went way overboard on their duties to help out this district and the students at Kelly Elementary. And then, I even have a second thank you, and this is to Mr. Islam. CSEA traditionally offers M&amp;O Academy every year. And this year, there is an academy that is going to train our maintenance and operations department in the OSHA, giving them some up-to-date certification over a two-day period in the month of March. And I approached Mr. Islam and asked him if he would please support this so that the guys that are out there working are working in the safest and most, the best atmosphere for what they're doing, to keep themselves safe, to keep the students safe, to keep the schools safe. There's nothing like being in line with OSHA. So, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Islam, for supporting the program and letting our M&amp;O people have an opportunity to attend this program to better this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Linda Silva. Up next, we have Communication Workers of America. And I believe that's Mr. Ron Fletcher.
Okay, good evening, Board, President Montes, interim Superintendent Mohammed Islam, and the rest of you, especially the student here. I've been trying to get one and say, but you don't have not made it. Before I start out, I'd just like to tell you today, I did an all-day kindergarten class, 28 students. Try it sometime. On page two of our agenda tonight, you say the next Board meeting is March 25th, you guys taking a holiday?
No, that's not the, it's just.
Well, we're not, we're not, we're not at liberty to discuss closed-session items, we apologize.
Okay. All right, I just thought to point that out. The other thing I just want to say is, I'm really excited about giving you guys our new contract proposal because this year, we're going to be doing a whole new contract. And I really have the feeling that with the LCAP and everything, everything's gonna work out really great. And instead of having just one class to substitute, you're going to have several, and I think that is best for all of your students. And I really love coming to your Board meetings and seeing the awards and everything, and what's going on. So, like I said, in another month, you guys will be sunshining your proposals, so then we'll start our negotiations, and that will be fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. And last but not least, do we have anyone from RSMA that would like to take the floor? Hearing none. We'll go on to the next item, D, under public hearing. So, at this time, do we have a motion to open public hearing?
I move that we open the public hearing at this time.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any person wishing to speak on an item on the public hearing agenda will be granted three minutes. The first item is regarding the Williams Inspection Reports, 2014-2015, second quarterly report. And there's reference D 1.1. The second item is to pursuant to the requirements of government code and board policy, the initial contract full proposal for the 2015-2018 through 2018 school years submitted by the Communication Workers of America for an agreement between the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education and the Communication Workers of America is hereby posted in compliance with the legislative requirements for public notice. And there's a reference D 2.1 through 3 for that. Do we have any public comments regarding this public hearing? Okay, with that, do we have an option to, do we have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly, do we have a second?
Seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, next.
Mr. Montes, it asks for a time.
Oh, and the time is 8:36.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, we go on to consent counter items. All items on the consent counter will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by the Board of Education members or the interim superintendent for individual action. So, we have to approve the consent counter items, reference E through J. And before we get a first and a second, do we have a preferential vote by our student Board member, Marisol?
Aye.
Thank you, Marisol. And Board Members, do we have a first and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ayala and Ms. O'Kelly. Do we have any discussion?
I'd like to discuss H4 and H6.
Any others? So, with that, I'd like to get a vote on all items except for H4 and H6. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried. Okay, so now we'll go on to H4.
Yes, I was wondering if we could explain again why we're installing portable toilets at these two elementary schools instead of, wasn't there any way to add permanent toilet facilities?
Yeah, I will invite Iris Chu to explain this to the Board, please, thank you.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Montes, Board Members, interim Superintendent, Mr. Mohammed Islam. My name's Iris Chu, Director of Facility Planning. I'd like to explain to you why we add two portable toilet room buildings to KC, one in KC, one in Meyer Elementary School. I would like to say that all our elementary schools are short of toilet room fixtures. But we picked these two schools because they are the worst. By looking at the education standard, that we have to provide 25 to 1, average, 25 to 1 ratio, 25 students per one fixture. In several of our schools, we're short of 1, 2, 3 fixtures for either boy's size or girl's size or both. And these two schools were short of 5, 6, 7 fixtures, including the sink, I mean lavatories, water closet, you know.
I, I know that we have a shortage of restrooms. My concern is, did we even investigate adding onto the school and adding permanent bathroom facilities? My concern is, did we even investigate adding onto the school and adding permanent bathroom facilities instead of portable?
Cost is the issue. You are very much, I mean, we are aware of the needs. And it is in the Measure Y Bond Facility Need Assessment, they ask for toilet rooms. But as you are aware...
But these aren't porta potties, right?
These are not porta potties.
They're the portable buildings.
Buildings, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes, and it's set on the ground, but it's almost like it lasts about 20, 30 years. Depends on how we maintain it.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any more comments or concerns on that item? Thank you, Ms. Chu. So we'll go on next to... Well, let's go ahead and take a vote on item H4. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, H6?
Uh, yeah, I'm just wondering why we are...
Could you read the item, please, Ms. O'Kelly?
"Approve an agreement with Dempsey, Philiger, and Associates DFNA to provide the district with an actuarial report of the post-retirement benefit obligations and annual required contributions as of February 1st, 2015." And I'm wondering, what is the purpose of ordering this report?
Ms. O'Kelly, this is required by law, and I will have Mr. Harris further explain why we have to do it because our current last report we have is going to expire in February this year. So it is required, but I'll let Mr. Harris further explain this to you. Thank you.
Good evening, Board President, Vice President O'Kelly, board members Walker, Martinez, and Ayala, and our student board member, I always forget you, forgive that. And interim superintendent Mohammed Islam. As Mr. Islam was saying, this is a required since 2004 by the GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board issued, an opinion that we needed to change the way we do our governmental accounting by. We needed to disclose the amount of the retiree healthcare, which traditionally, before that time, was not required to fully be disclosed. So every other year, you're required to have an actuary do a report. And this report, and this company has worked here for a few years, doing this report every other year. That's required so that we know what our annual contribution is, so that we know how much we need to begin to bill to, to begin funding the cost of retiree healthcare, both for active retired employees and those employees that will retire in the future.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Question? Referring that, the GASB requirement, the mandate, to the government's proposal with the STIRS increase and all the retirement increases, is that going to be factored in or is that a different GASB?
It's different, yeah.
Any more comments or concerns, questions? Thank you, Mr. Harris. So with that, do we have a motion to approve item H6?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly and Mr. Martinez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we go on to item I, Facilities Planning Consent Items. There are none. Item J, Personnel Services... I'm sorry, we already covered those. Item K, Discussion Action Items. The first item under Discussion Action Items is to approve a purchase, K, that's item K1, to approve a purchase to convert all middle schools to the Active Network Student Activity Management Software, also known as Blue Bear. There's a reference, K 1.1. Do we have any discussion? Can I get a motion to approve item K1?
Move to approve K1.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly and Mr. Martinez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have item K2, "To approve the contracts for the state-approved companies for 2014-2015 Second Cohort to provide Title I Supplemental Educational Services in accordance with the No Child Left Behind legislation to eligible students at Bemis, Curtis, Dolehand, Dunn, Hugh Banks, Morris, Preston, and Simpson Elementary Schools, and J Hugh Frisbee, Cove, Casera, and Rialto Middle Schools." And there's a reference, K 2.1, there in the back of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Do we have any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Last, we have item K3, "Approve the recommendations of the Administrative Hearing Panel." Do we have a, do we have a motion to approve the administrative hearings and reinstatement hearings?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll go on to item L, Comments from our interim superintendent, Mr. Islam. Take it away.
Thank you, President, Mr. Montez. Couple events ahead of us. Tomorrow, the 2015 Academy Decathlon Award banquet will be scheduled 6:00 to 8:30 PM. Mr. Martinez is going to be attending, and any member of the board like to attend this event tomorrow. Our Rialto and Eisenhower High School will be recognized at this event. So I did email to you, if any member of the board like to attend this event tomorrow night, please let me know, so we can register for you and serve dinner during this event. I think Mr. Martinez will be attending, I'll be attending, and other staff members will be attending, so. The next event, we have a Science Fair Rewards Ceremony will be held on Thursday, February 19, at 6:00 PM in the Rialto Middle School Gymnasium. I'd like to see you there, if you can make it. Next event, Rialto Unified School District Music Festival will be held at Casera Middle School on February 23rd from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. On February 24, 26, and 27, from 8:30 AM to 3:00 PM. Please plan to see our music festival on those days, if you can. The next event is Frisbee Middle School will be holding their Carrier and College Exploration Day on Thursday, March 5th, from 7:45 AM to 10:30 AM. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Islam. Next, we'll go over to comments from members of the Board of Education, and we'd like to start with one of the most important board members, our student board member, Marisol Angulo.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So today and on our Black History Month, for DSAC, we took a trip to the Black Voice Foundation where we met with Mr. Hardy Brown. And he showed us African artifacts, and he taught us to use our strengths to our advantage and to also work together. And it was honestly, it was a really great academic trip, and it was a good experience. It was just overall, a really, a really good experience. So thank you, and I hope you all have a great night.
Thank you, Marisol. Next up, we'd like to go over to Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, President Montez. I just want to congratulate all our award winners tonight. You're all winners in our book. That, I'm sure I could speak for the board on. You know, we're very grateful to our people who've been here, especially those who've been here many years. As a board member, it's always a pleasure to recognize our people, especially if it's students. Our calendar has been very busy, at least mine has. I try to attend the afternoon items, the evening items. I'm especially looking forward to the Science Fair and working with the parents of special ed with the task force. And just whatever else I get a call on and invited to. Board members are always out in the community, and if you see us, say hello, President Montez.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Next, we go to board member, Mr. Joe Ayala.
Well, thank you, President Montez. Good evening, staff and community. Tonight, I'd like to focus on student achievement. And I think of the kids still who are kind of silent out there, who are not doing so well, but are not communicating with their parents or their teachers, going through the motions. They're hiding it. So we need to find and identify who these individuals are, not to hurt them, but to find ways to help them. Now, what a lot of these kids do is, when they get behind, they give up. And they give up in creative ways. They use their energies doing other things. And so, those other things sometimes could be looked at as distractions. So one of the recipes to trying to help these kids, you need to identify them through talking to them, showing that you care, and trying to eliminate some of these distractions. And most of all, find resources to assist them, to catch them up on the lessons that they're behind. And then, to add to that, if you can get those kids to buy into learning the lessons a little bit ahead of time, it will pay huge, huge dividends when those kids can raise their hands in front of their whole classmates and come up with those answers for the first time. They'll light up like shooting stars. So that was my comments tonight. Thank you again for the opportunity to share a few words, and we're still moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. Up next, we go to our board clerk, Ms. Deena Walker.
So good evening, everyone. I've had a busy, just like a board member, Martinez, said, this, we are busy all the time. So we get a lot of invitations and show up places and everything. So I was pleased to be invited to speak at Rialto Middle School last month for their African-American Parents Advisory Council. And when I walked into the room, I'm thinking it was going to be maybe 20, you know, maybe 20 parents and kids. They had a cafeteria full of parents and students and families to give awards to their students, and it was just overwhelming. And I want to say just publicly, congratulations and thank you for the work that you're doing to the principal, which is Rhea MacGyver Gibbs, over at Rialto Middle School because that was the biggest APAC meeting I've seen in all my history of APAC meetings in the last five years of them organizing this work in districts in the Atlantic Empire. So again, big shout-out to Rialto Middle School. The other thing is, I was a part of the Putting on the Ritz auditions, woo-hoo-hoo! And very interesting, and I see why parents love their children and put them out there. And, and sometimes, they just love their children. Made me think about my own, who sometimes I say, "Get out there, you can do it." And I realized that I probably am one of those parents, and my children may not be the best, but hey, here's an opportunity. But it was great to see the kids out there, and it just reemphasized the need for the arts in schools. Because there were so many kids that auditioned and really understanding that that is an integral part of youth development, and there's an opportunity, and kids want to get involved, regardless of how great they are or how not-so-great. There's still an opportunity for them to be involved and engage in education. And I want to make sure that through our process with the LCAP, that we do remember that, incorporate that more into our schools and our daily programming in our schools at all levels. So that was just reinforced by those auditions. And so we look forward to seeing you two on March 7th for the actual Putting on the Ritz. The next thing was, I went to Preston Elementary, as I stated earlier. And Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, which I am actually a member of, was awarded Preston the opportunity to give books to their library for Black History Month. So they're doing a little contest, it's not a little contest, but a contest during the month of February, at which they'll also be donating books to their library, and they gave out books to their students. Again, an example of community partnerships, and where all students benefit and our district benefits as well. And then, lastly, I was able to attend the LCAP planning meeting a week or two ago and where we had all stakeholders, parents and community members, our district staff, board members, and teachers as well. And I just want to say that we began the process, we went way longer than what was planned, and it was a great thing because ideas start coming up and really a way to look at how we're going to plan the LCAP that truly represents what our needs are for our students in this district to excel. So I encourage you to be a part of the process because if we don't have all voices in, we cannot complain about what happens on the back end. Again, we have the report about what the budget is going to look like and what is going to actually be coming into this district. Let's have a voice in what happens and where the funding goes and what our priorities are. And that means, again, everybody at all levels need to participate. The flyer, community meetings, so share those if you have an opportunity to share with your families. If you're a teacher or a district person or even in a community person, share with the people you know that we'll have community meetings on March 3rd and 4th. And pick up a flyer because there'll be different locations, but we need your input as well on those for the LCAP. I'm excited to be here. Great things are happening in Rialto, and we just need to keep working together to make sure those things far exceed our wildest dreams. And thank you again for having me.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Next up, we have our board vice president, Mrs. Nancy O'Kelly.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. We always love to see you here. And I hope everyone's enjoying this unseasonably warm weather. I also want to congratulate everyone who was recognized tonight. Board meetings like this, I love because it's just a positive feeling all the way through, and that's really what Rialto's all about, and we're, we want to emphasize that. I have been busy too. I had a great time visiting Bemis Elementary School and Rialto Middle School. I would like to thank both of the principals of those schools and their staffs for making me feel so welcome. Had a good time. I saw so many great things going on at the schools. And, you know, it just warms your heart to get out to the schools and visit and see what is actually going on in the classrooms, and you know we are doing great things here in Rialto. I also enjoyed being a judge for the Putting on the Ritz. Deena and I kind of looked at each other a couple times. Yeah, but it was a lot of fun, and we really do have some incredible talent in this district, and we want to do everything we can to promote that. And again, I am, I am a strong proponent of the arts, and when school districts cut the arts, I don't understand because they're really hurting kids that need that. My own son is a musician, getting very professional every day. But he's getting more and more gigs, but he started out with Mr. Barton in fourth grade here in Rialto. And I have a funny story about that. My older daughter had played the saxophone in seventh grade. And the next year, in eighth grade, she decided she wanted to be in leadership. So the saxophone that we had purchased went into the closet. I'm like, oh, gosh, what are we going to do? So my son Sean came home, and he's talking about Mr. Barton and how he wants to be in band and everything. And he said, "And I want to play trumpet." I said, "Sean, I am all for you being in band, but you're playing saxophone." And he did, and he has certainly excelled with that. I'm also on the Measure Y Steering Committee, and I'm enjoying that, making sure we make the best use out of our Measure Y funds that we possibly can and do as many projects on our campuses as we can. So that's been a great deal of my time. This is kind of silly, and you all may laugh, but since I've been on the board, either through Facebook or conversations with kids on the street, I've gotten a lot of complaints about the school food, especially at the high school level. I've gotten it from all three high schools. They really don't like, for some reason, what we're providing for them. So I would like to suggest, Mr. Islam, perhaps we could get representative students from each of the high schools and see what their complaints are and work with nutrition services and see if we can make our food a little bit more palatable. Okay. All right, and that's all I have. I hope everyone has a happy Valentine's Day on Saturday, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you, Ms., Vice President, Ms. O'Kelly. Okay, last but not least, um... Okay, last but not least, um, I just want to welcome everyone here tonight. Buenas noches. A few, I, I don't have too much, um, I want to work at making our meetings a little bit faster, so I'm gonna live it myself here. But at first and foremost, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank, uh, our, uh, Safety and Security Chief, Mr. Gordon Leary. Want to recognize him and thank him for all of the good, hard work that he's doing to keep us and our students, uh, safe here, our community safe. If our schools are safe, that means our communities are safe. So, um, I want to thank him for all the hard work he's doing, and all, all of our, uh, Safety and Security Officers here at the district and at the school sites and our patrol. So thank you, guys. Let's give them a round of applause. I, I, I do want to congratulate all the people that were honored here today by the various different organizations of the district. You know, uh, uh, no good deed goes unpaid, so, um, I'm sure every single person earned their recognition. I want to thank the parents and community members that, uh, came here tonight to speak. We encourage all people to come and voice your concerns. And I do want to say that, uh, Mr. Islam, uh, is working very hard to address, uh, concerns that come forward to the district, to the board. And I just want to take a minute of this time to remind people to feel free to not, to bypass the board and call Mr. Islam directly or any of the other, uh, cabinet members or district administration, your school site administration. If you have any concerns, uh, we would appreciate it as a board for you to address first the issues with, uh, the site staff or the district staff before coming to the board, reaching out to the board. I don't mind, uh, having my mailbox messages full or my emails. I do not mind that. But we always want to give the administration an opportunity, uh, the school sites, an opportunity to address concerns and issues, um, at their level first before, uh, before they come to us here. And, um, and, um, I challenge everyone to, uh, please feel free. We have an interim superintendent who's doing an awesome job, has been doing an awesome job. We have cabinet members that are doing an awesome job. Please feel free to call them first before you call me or anybody else on this board. And, uh, it's not a bad thing. Um, we just want people to follow protocol. So keep up the good work, Mr. Islam, and keep up the good work, our associate superintendents and all our other administrators that are doing an awesome job here at the district. With that, I just want to piggyback on, um, some recognition, uh, that Ms. Walker gave to Ms. Rhea MacGyver Gibbs at Rialto Middle School. I, I actually recently attended their, um, recognition ceremony for their, uh, honor roll students, and it was, it was awesome. I mean, awesome. They had cheerleading, they had dance squad, they had, uh, pa- uh, house, uh, gym full of parents during the daytime. So I know a lot of people took time off of work. I know I did, and assorted a lot of other parents, because soon as they got their picture, they were gone. But, uh, I, I, I do want to say that Ms. Gibbs is doing an awesome job over there. And so are a lot of our other principals at some other schools, so please keep up the good work. And with that, thank you to our student board member for awesome presentations, the DSAC presentations. And last but not least, good evening, good night, buenas noches. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Do we have a second?
Yo tambien.
Preferential, uh, for those who don't know, that means me too. We'll take that as a second. Do we have preferential, preferential vote by our student board member?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.